Joining us for our regular scheduled board meeting tonight, Randy Harris is going to offer the implication and the pledge. You can stand.
Bow your heads, please. Father, we praise you and we thank you for your love and your mercy and kindness. We thank you for the opportunity to come together this evening and handle the business of the county. We ask for wisdom and guidance and counsel from above, Father. Please guide us and direct us. Lord, we ask that you bless our first responders, keep them safe. Bless those in our community who have needs this evening, Father. And again, we thank you for this opportunity, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, I know there's some things that people want to get to, some different programs going on tonight, and there's a lot of people here. So I'm gonna go ahead and bring you on up, Sheriff. Go ahead and go to Constitutional Office if you're here. Okay, I'll see you there. Yeah, well, go ahead and do it now. Yes, sir.
Thank you, Chairman Commissioners. Well, I'm here tonight, and I got, I'm gonna recognize three of my employees. Normally, I'd do it at our office and so forth, but a couple of reasons I wanted to do it here. One, recognizing is Mr. Richard Fleming, and I know Clyde would want to be here because I know he's gonna be proud of his, proud of his son. And another, another reason that I'm kind of bringing here is that, you know, every year I come up here and I ask all y'all that, hey, I need X number of dollars. And I know we had some discussion about, you know, retaining employees, you know, the ones that's here to experience, you know, that we need to retain them and keep them. And, you know, when we have to hire someone, that we've got to retrain them and all. And this, what I'm about to tell you, that kind of plays in to that about, you know, the having to retain and good employees, educated employees, experienced employees. And what I'm about to tell you, it's, it's, it's amazing to me what happened, you know, and, and, so what I'm gonna do is kind of paint you a picture of what happened. Back on August 14th, our 911 dispatch received a call from a lady, and she complained, or she was complaining about her husband, thought he was wanting to harm himself. Well, he had left a suicide type note on the bed along with a will he had made out. And the two dispatchers here, they, you know, they was talking to her, the wife, and saying, you know, you know, where would he be at, or where would he be going, and so forth. And then one of the dispatchers, you know, she got in line with them also. And so they started, you know, questioning about where he might go and where he was, you know, and so forth, more about him. They, you know, they pinged his phone, got a general location. They tried the property appraiser's website, you know, and, and I think the, some data was entered wrong, so they really didn't get nowhere that way. From there, they started asking her about, you know, you know, you know, tell me more about him, you know. And she says, well, he likes to go by the river. So we had some property up there, we have some property. So they was able to find out where the property was at. From that, from that information there, you know, Richard Fleming was dispatched to this area where they thought that the guy might be at. And once Richard gets there, he pulls up there, and then I watched this all on his body camera, and you've got an SUV parked underneath a tree, and in the tree, there is a rope with a noose on it, and he's backed up to the tree. Well, Richard gets there, and first thing he does, he calls for some backup. And, but then he actually goes over to the vehicle and tries, all the doors are locked, and the guy just sitting there in the, in the, in the car, you know, just locked on the steering wheel, wasn't saying anything, doesn't move around. And Richard's trying to make, you know, contact with him, and just, there's no luck. Well, there's a, there's a pickup truck parked next to the, the car that he's sitting in. And Richard, like I said, he's waiting for his backup to arrive before he, you know, does anything further. So you can see on his body camera that he walks around to the side of the, of the pickup truck, just kind of recovering, kind of waiting for his backup to, to arrive. He turned to, turned his back just a few minutes. When he turns back, the fella, he's, he's that quick, he jumps out of the car and gets on top of the SUV, and he's reaching for the, for the, the noose to put around his neck. Where Richard, well, he's a little quicker with a, with a trigger on the taser, and he tases him, and he falls straight down. And he's able to apprehend him at that point in time and handcuff him. But, you know, and, you know, they, you know, the dispatchers and Richard, they saved this guy's life. You know, the dispatchers, you know, they could have said, you know, took the information and says, hey, you know, my husband's, you know, and, but they went that extra step and talked to her and interrogated her and found the information. And then I want to commend Richard. I mean, you know, I wish I could show you the body camera footage. It was, it's, it's amazing how, how he handled himself, how he, how he, how he took the guy in custody, you know, because, you know, he was obviously meant to do what it went out to be. So I, so I just want to let y'all know that, you know, because of the dispatchers, their experience, you know, what a good job they done, Richard, I mean, y'all get, I wish we could watch this, this, the body camera because it's, it's amazing how it all took, all took place. And because of these three that I'm honoring tonight, you know, this guy is alive today because if they hadn't, you know, went above and beyond, I'm telling you, this guy wouldn't be here today. So I just, I just really want to honor them and let y'all know what a good job these guys have done for us. And thank y'all.
Thank you.
I want to call up, where y'all come at one time, Brittany Wheeler, Taylor McArthur, and then Richard Fleming. You want to come up?
Sheriff, we'll get out of the way, and y'all can get.
Yeah, y'all get in the center here if you want to.
Get in the center here and get a, get a good picture for the paper.
I mean, Ms. Clyde's team actually.
I sure will. You did a good job, Miss Clyde. Yeah, it's my job. They all did.
Y'all welcome to stay to the end if y'all'd like. You're sure?
No, we need, we got questions later on.
Thank you all for coming, and thank you all for what you do. Thanks, Sheriff. All right, moving on to our first item on the agenda. Item number one is approval of minutes from September 3rd, attended a budget hearing, and September 3rd, regular board meeting. Any changes, corrections, if anyone? There none? Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve, Mr. Tim.
Approved by Commissioner Fleming, second by Commissioner Hale. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. All right, got consent agenda two through 13. Anything needing to be pulled for discussion? Here none? Do I have a motion to approve, two through 13?
Move.
Is that you, Mr. Richardson?
Yes, sir.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Richardson. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Fleming. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. We've already went through that. Moving on to staff reports. Jimmy Norris.
Mr. Norris, there are a few people that need to be out of here in the next hour.
It's only that big.
Only 50 pages?
No, he's telling you the truth, though.
Okay. All right. Commissioner Stapleton told me I had three minutes, so.
There you go. Good job.
Anyway, things are looking really good in Swanee County. Any questions?
That's what, that's what I'm talking about.
There we go.
That's how you handle business.
Thank you for coming. Y'all good?
All right. I'm happy.
If you've got something you want to share, if not, we'll move on to the next one.
Just pick one topic and share it with us, not all 15 of them.
One topic?
One topic.
Uh, I'm glad to say that Commissioner Stapleton joined us on our new FEDP board. He attended his first meeting on September the 6th. He represented Swanee County really well. They were also in town last week, taking pictures for the new marketing campaign that the regional group is doing. And we visited the FPL Solar Farm, MACO, Clausner, and the new North Florida College Learning Station. One more thing, real quick on that. Those guys are doing really good. They started off with four programs. Two of them were maxed out, 25 students each. They're adding four or five more going into the next semester.
Awesome.
So if you look at that with 25 maxing out, they're, they're very happy. So I was surprised to see that two of those programs initially were maxed out. But anyway, they're doing really well over there, so we, we visited them. So anyway, that's two items. Is that good?
Yes, sir.
All right.
Thanks, Sheriff.
Boy, he's starting, he's learning quick on the county side, isn't he?
Taking a little while. Yes, sir.
Chairman Commissioners, I just wanted to remind everybody, tomorrow night at 7:00 PM at the Texas Roadhouse in Lake City, we have a benefit fundraiser. They were only able to advertise it for Swanee firefighters due to it, them being a, you know, a business. But we are able to advertise it any way we want, and I just want everyone to know that all proceeds raised will go directly to Jamie's, James Summers' children. We're having a rib eating challenge. It's gonna be us versus Columbia County Fire and Lake City Fire. I'm not sure exactly how the, how it goes. I think it's the quickest to eat. I don't, I don't think it's gonna be all you can eat, because I don't think they're gonna give away that many slabs of ribs, but I believe it's gonna be the fastest. We'll also have donation buckets. We have a flyer that's on our Facebook page. Anybody can go to that and print off a flyer from that. Anybody that brings that flyer in, 10%, 10% of all proceeds that anyone that brings those flyers in, will go to them as well. If they don't kick us out, we're gonna be standing at the door handing them out to everybody that walks in.
What I was about to say, make sure you have.
Right. So it starts at 7:00 PM. We're gonna be over there a little bit early, early to that, but we'd like anybody that can come and support that to come on over tomorrow night. Thank you.
7:00 PM at the Roadhouse, right? Thanks, sir. All right, moving on to the general business. Item 16, discuss, discuss with possible board action, placement of remembrance crosses around the courthouse for Memorial Day and Veterans Day. Spoke with a individual. If y'all have been to Brantford during Memorial Day, or to Lafayette County Mayo, you, they, you have family members that purchase a cross, and then you have a group that stores the cross and keeps the cross. And on these two holidays, they come out and place them in certain areas. They were wanting to do it around the roundabout, that's, but being DOT right away, they didn't want to go through the process of it, and the courthouse came up as a possible place to do it. And I told them I did not think it would be a problem. I checked with Mr. Pravat. He didn't have a problem with it other than maybe us putting a little something together that says that they're not gonna be there indefinitely, or, you know, a certain, too long. But other than that, I was just seeking to get permission from the board for them to be allowed to place those crosses there, and remembrance of those who've served, the heroes that didn't make it home.
Got my support.
I'm all in.
That sounded like I had a motion by Commissioner Stapleton, and a second by Commissioner Hale. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye. All opposed, same sign. All right, item 17, request authorization to award bid an exit contract for installation in the Zell's building. Mr. Harris?
We didn't receive any bids. We followed procurement policy. We had companies interested in just, I think they're just overwhelmed with the amount of paperwork that is involved in a government bid, to be honest with you. These subcontractors, a lot of them not remotely interested in filling out half a dozen pages. In any event, we will now go work on obtaining quotes, and that's the only other option that we have. So I'm just informing you that when it came time to open bids day, we didn't have bids.
All right.
That didn't surprise me, to be honest with you, because we don't have a lot of local installation companies here.
Mr. Norris is pretty good at hanging that insulation. We could get him two or three days a week.
Obviously, the length of his report, he don't have nothing to do.
That's right. We're gonna help him. I'm gonna blow the whistle and point. He's gonna handle that.
No, let's do what we have to do. I don't have a problem with this. Instead of going back out, just go ahead and get.
Yeah, we've got that, that building's really moving along, and we're trying to get wrapped up by the end of the year. So we're gonna go ahead and jump on this thing right away.
All right, everybody all right with that?
I'm good.
Yes, good deal. All right, item 18, discuss with possible board action. Any issues associated with the order of the wastewater plant, I said, if I.
I don't have anything to report on that.
We got a couple additional agenda, agenda items. Item number one is approval agreement with Florida Department of Health, amount of $100,000 for the operation of the Swanee County Health Department for 19 and 20, year 19 and 20. Now, that's pretty much self-explanatory. Same agreement every year. It's just a renewal of it, correct? Any questions?
Yes, sir.
You got a motion to approve?
Motion approved.
We got a motion, second by Commissioner Stapleton. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. All right, then. Item number two is authorization, authorization to apply state aid grant for the public libraries for Swanee County Public Library System. Again, that's something we do every year, and Ms. Lawrence, this is just standard procedure that we do every year, correct?
Let me make a comment.
Yes, sir.
As it, as it is different from item number seven, one was for the Florida, for us being the regional library system, and one is for the county.
Right.
And otherwise, it would have been all under item number, item number seven, but we kind of rolled them together.
Gotcha. All right. Anyone have any questions on this item? Here none? Do I have a motion to approve?
The move.
Second.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Richardson, second by Commissioner Fleming. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. All right, it's time. We'll open the floor to public comment. Anyone wishing to speak, they may make their way to the podium. Name and address for the record. And missing none, we'll move on to administrator comments. Mr. Harris, did you have anything?
Mr. Chairman Commissioners, I just wanted to thank Mr. Norris for being sensitive to the time constraints in this evening's meeting. That's all I had.
Thanks, sir. Board members' requests, comments. Mr. Richardson, you have anything for us?
Yes, sir. I would, I do, I'd like the board to consider, consider something. We are, I've talked to, to the Hale family and about the potential, the possibility of, and let them talk to the Summers family about the possibility of having a name, a road named in memory of Chief Summers. And we have a choice. If we can think about that, we'd look at different options. A state highway would require a resolution and a bill to be passed by the legislature. And if we did a county road, we can, we can do it by resolution here in the county. So kind of just thought about it today and this week, and thought it'd be a good time to go ahead and bring it up and see if the board has any thoughts on it as far as which way they'd rather go. I think there's plenty of, of support behind doing it. The idea that I had was to go in and initially was either name part of 129 or part of US 90, and do the fact that US 90 is directly related to Station 1. I was looking at US 90 from Boyle Street all the way down to downtown. Again, that would require a bill to be sponsored and by the legislature and get that approved. Or we could rename what we know as Boyle Street to the city limits. That's about a mile, about the same distance, about a mile, mile and a half, and name that road out in front of, and if the city would, would go along with it, we could name the entire street all the way up to US 90. So I just wanted to throw that out there and see if you guys had any thoughts about it.
The part that you're talking about, though, is not Boyle's, it's.
It's numbered, but it's.
Eighty.
Yeah.
The only question I would have on that is our 911 system, if that is a, be a problem or not be a problem. And we already have that road dedicated in the memory of Ray Hood.
Is it? Okay, I didn't know, we didn't, no one had mentioned that, so we weren't sure about that.
Mr. Chairman, I've had some conversation with Commissioner Hale about that new station that we're hoping to construct up here north of town, being named in his honor as well. It's a little bit premature, really, to have that discussion perhaps, but being the optimist that we are, we're believing that we're gonna have the funding before long with some support from legislature for that. So you can just keep that in mind as well. We're working toward that end.
I don't have a problem with us sitting down and talking and coming up with something, or looking at some different things. The only, the only thing that we've thought about in the past, we, we had slowly tried to start moving away from naming it because of so many requests coming back in. So we just need to, if we, if we do move forward, we need, we need to figure out how we're gonna do it and, and just put a lot of thought into it rather than just naming a road, because if you, what you do for one, you know, the next.
Better do it for another.
You gotta do for someone else. So it's, I'm not saying that I don't want to do it. I just want to put a little more thought into it than, than coming in tonight and telling you, yeah, I'm 100%.
And one way we could, you know, kind of avoid a little bit of that would be to let the state do it. Our representative has named several.
I don't disagree with you.
Three of their, he's, he's had a lot of names.
He just passed, they, one of his first bills that he got through was.
43 difference.
For following FHP.
HP, yeah.
Officers across state.
And so if anyone could do it, I'm sure Representative Brandon could. And, and I was, and I was recommended that be a short, you know, a shorter part of the, of the highway rather than the entire section. So it would be something like Boyle Street 2 downtown. And we know he traveled that street on a regular basis back and forth home and everything, and with his job. So it just felt like it was probably a good, a good place to start.
No, it is. I don't, I don't disagree. But y'all have any thought on it or anything? For later discussion?
Yeah, I think get some more information, and let him talk to who he's talking to.
Yeah. I'd kind of rather just move it through the state if we, if we decide that's what we want to do.
Yeah.
Well, when y'all give me the heads up, I can just let Representative Brandon know, and he'll add it to his agenda.
We may as well give it now, haven't we?
Sir?
What did you say, the station?
Leave it to the state.
Oh, the state, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. If you want to keep talking to him, I'm fine with that.
Okay. Good with that.
You can move forward with it.
All right, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Fleming, you have anything for us?
Just, just like to commend Keith and Nina. I didn't say this last night for budget. You know, we had a very good workshop. Things went well. Every other commissioner commended you last night. So since you're here, I want to give my, my little part here. But I, I would like to say that I really appreciate the idea of a father-son relationship without having my boys, my young men, rather, and for him being recommended tonight, recommendation. And I would always say that I appreciate, really appreciate all good things. And, and I know behind every dark cloud is a bright sunshine. The reason why I'm saying this is because of the recognition that our past chief, it was a hard thing to, to accept. But I know with God, all things are possible. I don't want to preach. I'm not trying to preach. But, you know, it was hard. It's, Chief Summers was a, it's gonna be hard replacing him, Chief Hand, but I know, you know, things happen, and I know that we can still move. But the traumatic experience of losing someone like him, it kind of gave you a setback. And that setback, I'm not saying now what Commissioner Richardson is saying, getting a, a road named after him, that's the bright sunshine. It'll be a remembrance of him. And I, I commend you for, for your thoughts. I had thought on some term, but I kind of like just laid, you know, laid there with it. But I thank you for bringing that out. Commend you for it, and to all the constituents out tonight, coming out, seeing how we conduct county business. You keep us on our toes. Mr. Hancock, you're another commissioner. I always say you're the sixth, you're that 12th man. You're the sixth man. You're that sixth commissioner. I can remember when you told me about six years ago, you said, Clyde, you haven't been unethical, but you voted on something that you should not have. Well, I went to counsel and I corrected that. Now, I want to say I appreciate you for making me be honest. I want to, I don't want to fail not one individual. My thing is I want to do what's right. And as long as I'm on this board, then I'm gonna do the right thing. And if I make a mistake, come to me. I'm proud of you for coming to me, telling me, helping me, and make me a better person. That's what I do with my children. If they make a mistake, I chastise them in a good way, and, and it make them a better people. Thank you. See, I don't want to take all of this. I don't want to say all of this, but appreciate you.
Mr. Hale, you have anything for us?
No, I do. I have a few things. I do want to thank Mr. Norris for representing us in Columbia today during the safety traffic meeting. A lot of us commissioners were unable to attend, but he was there. I thought he might speak about that, but I guess not. But anyhow, but. But no, I do want to say this. I got to spend some time with some of our county employees. Again, today, I was out visiting some people in my district. And I just want to say, guys, we do live in a great county. We really do. Got a lot of good people that work for us, a lot of people representing us. And, and Mr. Ford, I got to tell you, I'm gonna come up with an award for the best kept yard for you. I tell you, every time I go by, your place looks amazing. But that's really all I want to say. Just appreciate what all you guys do as well. Thank you.
Thanks, sir. Mr. Stapleton?
Yeah, I'd just like to say, Commissioner Fleming, I, I agree with you, what you're saying, and I appreciate 911 dispatch, those people for doing the great job that they've done. And, and I'm super proud of Mr. Fleming's son. A lot of people don't know all the details and the journey he's been on. And I'm not gonna get into that, but I just, I will say this, it's a journey that a lot of people would have never come out of. And he's, he's making us proud every day.
Thank you.
That, and anytime you want to preach, you can. I sit right here and listen to you.
Have you been to Men's Day at church with him yet?
I have not.
It will take all day.
But he said he's taken two days.
It will take all day. I'm telling you. He invited, you haven't been here for this. He invited me to church, and we get there at like 10:30, 11 o'clock. I said, what time we gonna be done, Clyde? He said, we done time to eat supper.
Hey, let me tell you, better take some change, 'cause I ran out of money.
Pass that play around.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
That's good folks. Seriously, though, I, I appreciate you, and I appreciate your family, and I, that's, that's a great kid you got there. And I sure pray for that man that he saved his life, and I hope he gets the help he needs, and we can move forward, and he'll have, live a wonderful life. Only other thing I'd say is I didn't do it this week, but next week, I'm gonna wear my Gator shirt. That's all I got.
You still got your Seminole tile, Mr. Hale? I just wondered after Saturday if you still kept it.
Nope, I got it.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I was gonna say that I was gonna wear my Seminole shirt, but I only wear winning shirts. wear winning shirts.
I want two things I have. On October 7th, that'll be our, the Chamber will have their Business of the Year Dinner. Our Economic Development Department, I believe, again, is sponsoring it. So look forward to seeing everyone out there. Cocktail hour starts at 5:30, followed by dinner and awards at 6:30. And also, there'll be a mix and mingle. The Downtown Cafe Thursday, September 19th, from 5:30 to 7:00, if anybody wishes to attend. On that, I don't have anything.
One more thing, Mr. Harris. Well, we have one more meeting, but remind everybody, October 5th is Hooked on Heroes, by the way.
Oh, I see it, yes. Hooked on Heroes fishing trip, October 5th, in Steen Hatchie. And still, I think we may need a couple boats. So if anybody's got a boat and they wanna volunteer, take a veteran fishing, we'll pay for your gas, your food, your lunch, your breakfast, your bait, rods and reel. All we need is you and a boat.
That's it.
And you'll be blessed for it, I can promise you that.
They still do need boats.
Yeah.
Yep.
Any others? All right. I just need a motion to adjourn.
The move.
Second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
There you go.